Twenty first, two thousand and twenty. Please rise and join me with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller? Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein? Lalum?
Here.
Manti? Absinthe? Rademski?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
President.
Thank you. All right, before we get started, I would just like to acknowledge and offer condolences to Councilman Roby for the passing of his father, Joe Roby. He was ninety-nine years old, a World War II veteran, and really just a pillar of the Watertown community. So, a great loss for everyone, and want to acknowledge that and offer condolences. And also, an uncle to Matt Roby, my, is that right? Great uncle. Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And before we do that, I would like to move items G four and five, the collective bargaining agreements, to the consent agenda because we discussed those in our previous committee meeting. So, with that change, is there a motion? A motion by Hollein and a second by Bueller.
Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from item thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Vilhauer. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Cross those off here. All right, the next item is E, public comments. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, now is the time. Please come forward to the microphone. See no one, we'll move on to item F, which is approval of the agenda. Have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Hollein. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item G is the regular agenda, starting off with number one, the second reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero one, a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-one point thirty-eight, planned unit development of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. Look for a motion, then I'll open the public hearing. Have a motion by Lalum, I think, and second by Hollein. And before we do the public hearing, I'll ask the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to give us some background.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is second reading for this zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-one point three-eight, related to planned unit developments that are allowed through our zoning ordinance. A planned unit development, otherwise known as a PUD, is a tool, a toolbox for developers to develop their land. It allows for some flexibility and some leeway in building locations on their lots, having mixed uses within their property, and other variations to that nature, that are also checked off at the city level to make sure they're not contrary to the surrounding uses and things of that nature. The staff has reviewed this and had discussions with some developers recently, and thought we could make some improvements on this ordinance in relation to how user-friendly it could be, making it more user-friendly, I should say. The current PUD ordinance requires quite a bit of upfront legwork as far as engineering costs and design and specifics related to the PUD, and some of that's been backed out through this ordinance amendment that's before you tonight, and made it a little bit less of a lift on the upfront end of getting a PUD approved. And once that PUD is approved, they would still go through those appropriate check-offs as far as some of those more specific engineering detailed reviews would entail. In a nutshell, that's really what we're trying to accomplish here, is a little bit more of a user-friendly tool in the toolbox for developers to use, and hopefully developers to potentially take advantage of and use down the road here in Watertown. Our urban planner, Randy Hanton, is with us this evening. This was recommended for approval by the City Planning Commission, I believe unanimously at their December...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth meeting. Thank you. Yes, unanimously, four to zero. And we'd be glad to help answer any questions.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite anyone that's here to talk about this issue to come forward. See no one, I will close the public hearing and look for council discussion. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Really? This is a pretty major change to our PUD section in our ordinance, but I think it's a really good one. A lot of thought went into it. This should be more clear for everyone involved in the process and be helpful for developers as well. So, I think it's a good change. Councilman Vilhauer?
I'll just ask a question. Is there any downside to not making these changes?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Vilhauer, from a staffing perspective, I feel that our bases are all still covered perfectly well with this new process. Again, it just, it makes less of a lift upfront for the developers, but those things that used to be required early on in the process will still get checked off later on in the process. It just helps the developer move forward a little more efficiently to get their PUD approved, and then do the heavy lifting on the design end of things. And staff would still use the city's regulations on the design standards to ensure that things are being done appropriately thereafter, so.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item two is second reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero-two, a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-one point two-six, C two local commercial district of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown, amending conditional uses to include apartments. We have a motion by Lalum and a second by Hollein, and I would ask the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to brief us on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is pretty self-explanatory in the title. It is amending chapter ordinance number twenty dash oh-two and chapter twenty-one point twenty-six of the city code regarding the C two zoning district. Currently, in the C two zoning district, we do not allow, as a permitted use, or excuse me, as a conditional use, to have apartments above businesses. And that's what this amendment would do, is create that ability to have that in the C two district only. It's been proposed by a developer in town, it's been vetted through the planning commission, and they too recommended this for approval unanimously by a four to zero vote at their December nineteenth meeting.
All right, thank you. And I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, our other commercial zones do allow apartments. I know C one does, and C three as a conditional use? Or is it, it's a permitted use? Oh, no, not in the C three? Okay, I take it back. Just in C one? And in this zone, it will be conditional use, which means it has to go before the Board of Adjustment and have a public hearing and meet certain conditions, so. With that, I will open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to talk about this. Please come forward.
Mike Lawrence, we're working on a project in the C two district, and as it says in the C two district, when you, that the C two is designed to have commercial exposures that supplement the neighborhood. So, not having a mixed-use district in Watertown, which is something I think we need eventually to get. I mean, you go through many communities, like Brookings, you go down Sixth Street, they have all these mixed uses. It gives a developer flexibility, and it also gives the businesses underneath it a steady flow of traffic. You know, you have a sandwich shop with thirty people above it, sandwich shop has a better chance of making it than if it was just standing there by itself. So, we're looking to incorporate mixed use into our projects. We thought this is probably a better way than just asking for a variance or just like letting us do it. This gives everyone the opportunity to bring a project forward and kind of play by the same rules. So, that's kind of why we took this approach, and I'd like to see more mixed use in our community. I think it's, like I said, it allows for more flexibility in development, so.
Thank you. Councilman Vilhauer? I'm sorry.
That's right. I'm moving up in the world.
Take that as a compliment.
I moved up a couple steps. I know that the planning and zoning, and they have talked about a mixed-use zoning and where it is applicable, so I know that is possible overlay districts and things of that nature. So, I think this is a good step to move forward in that.
Yeah, I think it gives us the option to move forward with our project until that gets developed. I mean, like I said, it's a tool.
Brought that forward as well, so hopefully they'll continue on that.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? See none, I will close. The C three is along highways, but C two is meant to be in neighborhoods, and so they're kind of scattered. We have a couple of them at the lake, and...
Yes, that's correct, Mayor, Councilman Hoyer. There are, I believe, one on the, well, a few around the lake, one in primary, one on the south end, one on the north end of the lake, I think off the southwest corner as well. I do have my map up, Pete, if you could pull that up, please, for me, for the council's reference. There's a small area along two twelve here, that's C two, and up in this area, and further north on eighty-one, I believe.
Yep, around Northridge, Fourteenth Avenue and Highway eighty-one.
Up in this neighborhood. And as we pan west... Doesn't look like there's a lot out here until you get to the lake. Here's a larger area at the lake. And then, the north end, I believe, had one or two. That one right there.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of see it in reference. I'm guessing C one is currently our primary one, where we kind of have that mixed use with apartments.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
It's conditional, so.
Yes. Anyone else? Councilman Vilhauer?
I guess I just want to repeat what you said a while ago, Sarah. I mean, if there are any concerns about this, it would still need to come, as a conditional use, still need to come before the Board of Adjustment for approval, correct?
That's correct. Right. So, in a conditional use, generally, you're saying you think it's okay under certain circumstances. Maybe not outright, come in, get a permit, walk out, but after review by our Board of Adjustment. So, it's a higher level, there's always a public hearing. All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item three is second reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero-three, a zoning text amendment, adding chapter twenty-one point seventy-eight, communal living, to the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown, and amending chapter twenty-one point six-three, off-street parking and loading requirements, twenty-one point one-five, R one C, compact single-family residential district, chapter twenty-one point one-six, R two, single-family attached residential district, and chapter twenty-one point ninety, definitions of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. Have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lalum. And I would just like to point out that the council and mayor all received a letter, which was worried about the impacts to the R one zone in doing communal living as a use in that zone, and that is not what's happening, and if there was a, there's a misunderstanding if it's believed that this will impact the C one zone. It's only allowed in the C one, or, excuse me, R one C, which is the affordable housing compact zone, and it's, and the R two, R two A, and R three zones. And it wouldn't be applicable at all in the R one zone, which is their most heavily protected residential zone. The communal use is already going on throughout our city, is just giving us another tool to help regulate it. So, I'll let Heath expand on that a little bit.
Took all the words right out of my mouth, there.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. That's a great summary. I think that, I'll just step back to the cause for this, or the ask for this change. It kind of stems back to some of the nationwide trends we're seeing with folks wanting to live in a more communal environment and sharing living expenses with people that they're not related to. Our ordinance is currently restrict that from happening, and requiring it, when you get any more than three unrelated adults living together, that's not allowed. And this addresses that concern, it opens it up to have that communal living use occur in those zones, as the mayor indicated, R one C, R two, R two A, and R three, but not the R one zoning district. And in a nutshell, really, that's what it's about. And Brandy, the urban planner's here tonight, too, to help answer any questions you might have.
So, the main concern that people have with allowing more people that aren't related to live together is the parking, and there's going to be a bunch of cars all over the place. So, one of the requirements to this conditional use would be off-street parking, to be at a much higher level than at the other zones. So, currently, right now, if you have three people that are living in an R one zone, that's legal if they're three college students, they're not related to each other, or three individuals that aren't related in any way, they are most likely just to have their own independent cars, so you probably have at least three cars. I think we require two off-street parking spots. And we actually probably have a lot of situations where more than three people are sharing a house right now, and probably each one of them has a car and two off-street parking spaces. With the changes, we're requiring one parking slot per bedroom. So, if you have a three-bedroom house, three off-street parking stalls, four bedrooms, four. So, it's a higher level of protection for the neighborhood than we currently have by allowing this, actually. Yes, and you have to do this by permit. It isn't something that someone can just go out and do outright. They have to come in. It's a conditional use, there's a public hearing, right, am I right, Brandy? Is it public hearing on each of these? Let Brandy answer that question.
I was just going to add that having this in ordinance is actually nice for us to be able to regulate if neighborhoods are seeing houses that are being rented out to, say, VOTEC kids, or if they're having issues with parking, that it has something for us to regulate that by, and so that we would have them come in and be heard by the Board of Adjustment for this conditional use. So, it is actually, it protects neighborhoods more than how we do today.
Right.
Yeah, I would echo the mayor's comments on the design standards for, especially for the parking, because that becomes one of the bigger concerns when you have more than three non-related people living somewhere, is all the traffic coming and going. But the off-street parking requirements here really do help address that, so that you don't have an encumbrance of vehicles on the street that tend to take up where other people may want to park and use as public parking. So, I think that's, that was a great point, Mayor. Thank you for bringing that up, I forgot to.
You're welcome. I'm going to open the public hearing before we get too much conversation. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this issue? If so, please come forward. See none, I will close the public hearing, and now I will entertain comments. Councilman Albertson?
The concerns that I've had issued to me have been about the parking, obviously, then, and that, do you have to have parking spots, or can you do like you see around town, even with this ordinance, where people just drive up on the lawn, drive up on the sidewalk, drive up? And so, then they really don't have parking spots, so then it becomes, instead of two cars, like before, and now it could be four cars, and they don't have parking spots, they just park, if they can't park on the street, then they park on the lawn, sidewalk, and so. That was their concern, that it's going to turn any area where you have this now, a lot more into, what, I want to use a nice word, but kind of messy.
Actually, rains it down a little bit.
Right.
And this helps that problem that, of people doing that. If they want to file a complaint, then we can do an investigation. If they have four unrelated people living in a three-bedroom house, you know, that's against the law in the R one, and in, if they are in another zone, we have a process to help them do it right. So, they would have to do off-street parking spots, and that doesn't mean a grass area big enough to drive over the curb and park on. That's not a parking slot.
That's the concern I've heard, is that it's going to be a messy area then, because right now, they do that, you can drive around now and see people parked on grassy areas.
I'm guessing that there's nobody in our community that is even aware that you can only have three unrelated people living in a house? I don't think that's common knowledge, and I don't think people are not doing it because our law prevents it. I think people are just living where they're living, and this gives us a tool to regulate it.
To Councilman Albertson's point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandy, but the conditional use process will check off the off-street parking requirements, Councilman Albertson? And what that means is that they will have to show on their site that they're proposing to have communal living, the appropriate area of paved parking that would be accommodating to those people. So, hopefully, that, if that process is carried out to a T, that's exactly what would happen, and they would be required to demonstrate the off-street parking stalls.
Thank you. Councilman Rademski?
What's the maximum number of people that can live in one house? Does that go by how many bedrooms the house has, or? Yes.
It's six, so it's capped at six.
Only if they're unrelated. You can have, as I've said, forty-five family members living in a one-bedroom house, if you like. We don't regulate that.
Second question to that is, now, when they come before the board, if this gets approved, do we send somebody out there to make sure that there's proper egress and basement bedrooms?
So, they would be required to show that on their site plan, and, you know, to, if we, it would be more on a complaint basis, I feel. If there were more people in that house than bedrooms that they showed when they came for their application, then we could look into that as an enforcement issue, most likely.
Councilman Hoyer?
So, I guess, I'm very, very on board with this, and I think it does solve a lot of the problems, too, but it kind of ties back to Watertown's enforceability of a lot of our housing standards, just because it seems like currently, we don't have a great system, other than filing complaints, which isn't really probably how you should be doing it. We should probably have a board or something that has the ability to inspect rentals or
On people's permits.
questionable living situations. And maybe that's something we need to visit going forward a little bit here, just so that we can...
I've heard that a lot. I've had lots of people ask that, you know, what can we do? Can't we have more? Right now, we don't have the staff to do it.
Right.
But it is certainly something that we can look at doing in the future.
Because some of that, too, is just looking at, and this brings up the conversation a little bit, so I don't want to go too down the rabbit hole, but just enforcing renter and people who lease homes, protecting both their rights, making sure that everything's taken care of in a positive way, and that we are possibly inspecting and know in our community where all the rentals, rentals actually are, because I know that's even a question.
Right.
So, looking at maybe things we can do there to possibly remedy that without adding a huge expense to the city or anything. I know it would probably assist the police force a little bit, too, in some ways, just knowing where some of our rentals are and stuff, too, even if that involves them going through as well for wellness checks throughout time with these rentals, because I can guarantee that we have some in town that are not up to snuff, so.
I think you're probably right. Any other comments or questions from the council? Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandy, why, tell me why we have R one C. Does that, does that make sense to do it in that zone?
So, we included that zone just because, with that being our more affordable zone, that if their lot would allow for them to meet all of the requirements, that they could utilize that and have the conditional use as an option. But a lot of the lots are going to be, you know, they're smaller as far as their lot width and the lot size itself, so they probably wouldn't be able to meet the requirements, but we wanted to leave that in there as an option if they, if their lot was suitable.
Good question. Actually, we've had one inquiry about doing this, and it's in R one C. Councilman Hol...
Thank you, Mayor. What, what's the penalty for non-compliance?
So, if they weren't able to meet the requirements, then we wouldn't be able to bring them forth to the Board of Adjustment. But then it would just be the complaint base, and then we would turn back on the enforcement issues, I would believe.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a comment, it's been kind of circled a couple different times here, but how many people, I mean, I'm totally in favor of this, but again, how many people are going to know that they've got a requirement to meet all these specifications, get a conditional use permit? I mean, I, I mean, I have no idea that there was a limit of three before this came up currently. I mean, now it's a matter of how do you educate the public that there are requirements they've got to go through if they do want to rent out their, their home to a bunch of, you know, Lake Area Tech students.
Right, and hopefully, word would spread, too, but at least, too, like I said before, then at least we have something in the books where we have something to fall back on. And then, so it would be a matter of us getting a complaint, and then looking into it and letting them know that if there are more than three unrelated adults, or four in a R three zone, then that they would need to come to the Board of Adjustment and then show their site plan that they were able to meet the requirements to have up to six unrelated adults.
Councilman Hoyer?
So, I'm kind of wondering, in this situation, are we looking at more so, like, Lake Area Tech students, or is it more of a Golden Girls situation? And I know that sounds funny, but I'm curious if that's what, what we're expecting. I'm curious who's kind of more interested in this, because we have, you know, multiplexes that facilitate lots of different people living in it. I know you can rent a house with so many people. I'm surprised it's three as well, because I'm like, go to Brookings, I'll, you can get a lot of people in a house, I tell you what, but...
Right. Well, and the, the one inquiry we had was actually for a group of, I would imagine, retired people that want to just live together. They might not even be retired, just a group of people that wants to be, just wants to live together as unrelated adults. But I think it's fitting...
And want to comply with the law. They don't want to break the law. I mean, there's that.
Right.
And also, it is fitting, too, for our community with having Lake Area Tech, to allow for an applicable lot to, or property to use this. Make it more affordable.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item six is approval of resolution number twenty dash zero-one, providing for the classification and salaries of certain City of Watertown employees and officers for the period commencing January one, two thousand and twenty, exempt staff. Have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Albertson, and I will ask our finance officer, Kristen Baumse, to tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution that we look at every year. This is what will establish, establish the salaries for the exempt. There is two non-exempt, non-union positions on here as well, as well as the mayor and each older person's wage for the year. I will say that the biggest change is that this resolution does implement the new wage study. You can see the classification pay grades have changed to incorporate the new matrix, and the matrix is attached within the resolution. So, if there's any specific questions, I can try to answer them. If not, I would... specific questions, I can try to answer them, if not, I would ask for a motion to approve.
All right, um, Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristen, just, uh, humor me for a minute, go to page one seventy-three, I'm looking at the very top line there, wastewater, solid waste superintendent, um, one hundred and seven, five ninety-five, twenty-four, uh, pay grade one eighty, now when I go down to the new matrix, that is off the chart, I mean, that, that's higher than what the matrix provides, can you explain that?
That would be the current wage of that employee, so that wage is off of the matrix, so it is held.
Okay, thank you.
You just happened to pick one that was frozen, most of them are on the matrix. Anyone else?
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item seven is approval of resolution number twenty dash zero two, providing for the classification and salary guidelines of certain City of Watertown employees for the period commencing January one, 2020, the non-exempt staff. Have a motion by Holin and a second by Beeler, and Kristen, want to tell us about this one too?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, so this resolution actually covers, um, the non-exempt staff, it's a mixture between the police union, the fire union, as well as the AFSP union, um, so in here, because during the public works, we discussed the, um, fire and police unions, um, which they did accept to be moved to the new wage matrix, so when you look through here, when you see the grades, it looks like there's that kind of a mixture, and there is for that reason, because of the different unions and what they chose to do, so this will establish, um, essentially, it's a little bit different than the other one, where there's usually only one person in that, where this covers, um, probably a broader range, number of people in that position, so we just list it by grade, um, and then you would look at the matrix that it follows to determine the, kind of the pay range for that position, if there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
All right, thank you, Kristen, any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a comment, I really want to extend appreciation to, uh, staff, department heads, uh, everybody that was involved in this, uh, the last several months, so, uh, a lot of work went into this, so, uh, nice to see it get to this point, and I think it's going to bode well for us going forward.
Yes, thank you, anyone else? All right, all those in favor, oh, sorry, Councilman Vilhauer, I did that again, I am sorry, Adam.
That's okay.
Councilman Lalum?
Um, can you just go through why there's two different pay scales so that the public is aware of it? Two matrices, excuse me.
That's because this resolution covers, um, the AFSP union, which chose to not, um, update the wage matrix with, with the new wage study, so they will be part of the, um, matrix that has the grades one through nine, and then the other two unions that it covers is the fire and police union, they both, um, with the wage reopeners determined to go to the new pay matrix, which will have the new pay grades, the one fifteen through the two hundred is the new system, so when you see those different grades, it'll show you which matrix they're on.
Are you waving, Matt, or?
I just thought I'd just add one piece to that, um, so, uh, when we negotiated with AFSP last year, they, uh, chose to lock in a guaranteed increase for the next three years, uh, whereas the other, other two unions left it open for negotiation, and so, uh, with our approach to them, they had the choice to just say, we'd rather not, uh, this, this time around, and so that's what they chose to do.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item eight is approval of resolution number twenty dash zero four, establishing fees for city licenses, permits, administration, and other miscellaneous items. I have a motion by Holin and a second by Robie, and I'll ask Kristen to describe this, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, this is the fee resolution that basically establishes all the fees for the different departments throughout, um, the City of Watertown, I will say that we have added quite a bit to this, it's not that those fees have never been there, but, um, we felt it was maybe a benefit to the public to have one resolution so they can see fees throughout, the only things that really changed is building services had a very slight, uh, increase to their research fee, five dollars, not anything too substantial, and then the library department did establish through their board, they added a meeting room fee at ten dollars per hour for, for profit, um, and then nonprofit is for free, so that was something that is established now on this fee resolution, and the other significant thing that was added is the street department, um, you will see all of their rates that they are, have been charging, but now it's on one location, we did also incorporate the park and rec fees in here, now I will say we made a note that those fees are actually set and established by the park and rec board, so it being part of this resolution is only for information purposes, it's not that the council is establishing those, those are set by the park and rec board, um, but we thought having one location so that if anybody from the public or anybody from any city department wants to see what the fees are throughout, it's one location, so if there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, anybody have any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a couple of questions, um, I think I've asked this before, do we ever make any effort to compare with other communities, uh, see if we're online one way or the other?
I don't know if, like, we do, I do think, this is what comes forth, I send this out and I ask all the departments to review your fees, this isn't just coming from the finance office, so I will say that I think the departments are looking kind of at what other communities are doing for their specific department, so...
Makes sense, thank you.
Yep.
And also, it, it's all capitalized in one resolution now, but is, is this information available on our city website if somebody wants to, uh, know a fee for something, I mean, how easily accessible are these, have to call?
We don't have it right now, but if you would want it, we could easily put it out there now that it's one easy location, just do a fee resolution and put it out there.
Yeah, that's a good idea, thank you, Councilman Lalum?
All right, uh, to piggyback on that, I'd like to see if there's areas, I see there's areas on here for, you know, renting different facilities that the city has, how to, how to locate, you know, who to get ahold of to contact, say for the, you know, whatever it may be, whether it's lion shelter or something along those lines, um, you know, as well as I saw on here, the, what was it, the, uh, garden plot, you know, is there a list for those, I mean, I don't, you know, just trying to figure out if we're going to put this on the system, you know, where people can get ahold of the correct people so they're not calling City Hall or not calling, street department for something that's not street department.
Yeah, and we can look into that, but as far as the park and rec, I think the majority of theirs is, and anybody that calls the park and rec office would, um, but yeah, we can sure try to make it so that it, there gives a little bit of direction too.
Well, it might be just, hey, this is park and rec, here's the number for this area, so, just a ease of use for anyone that's looking it up.
Okay, be easy column to add.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item number nine is approval of resolution number twenty dash zero five, expressing intent to enter into a three-year lease agreement with Todd, Austin, and Preston Fleming for the hay rights on grassland located at the Watertown Regional Airport. Have a motion by Holin and a second by Hoyer, and, uh, Matt, would you tell us about this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, this is the first step, uh, that we need, uh, have to take to enter into a lease, uh, this is the hay lease out at the airport ground, uh, the, the party that we're contemplating entering into the lease with is the current holder of the lease, and in the previous lease, they had a right of first refusal, and they chose to, um, to, they, they would like to enter into a new lease with us, and so, um, this is the notice of intent, uh, if this is approved this evening, then the actual lease will be on the next agenda, uh, the rate was suggested by the airport manager to remain the same, sixty-three twenty-five per acre per year, in addition, uh, this lessee provides to the Bramble Park Zoo twelve round bales of hay per year.
All right, thank you, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item number ten is the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero four, amending section three point zero four zero three of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown to expand the membership of the animal control board, now no action is required tonight, but Matt, will you please tell us about this?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, I believe this, the impetus for this was the mayor, if I recall correctly, and the animal control board took up the discussion, uh, currently there are three members of the board by ordinance, uh, in practice, incidentally, there's actually been four members, and so, uh, the first discussion was whether or not to upgrade, uh, update the ordinance to reflect what's actually been occurring, uh, but then we thought, uh, the number five probably makes more sense, and so, um, this is the proposal that was just approved at the last animal control board meeting to increase the number of members of the animal control board to five, it also spells out that, um, uh, three of those members are essentially designated, one has to be a member of council, one a licensed veterinarian, and one an employee or board member of Glacial Lakes Humane Society, the other two members would be at-large citizens.
Thank you, and are there any questions about that? All right, obviously I think it's a good idea. Item number eleven is the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero five, first reading of ordinance number twenty dash zero five, a zoning text amendment, adding chapter twenty-one point eight one, firework activities to the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown, and amending chapter twenty-one point three two, I1 light industrial district, chapter twenty-one point three six, I2 heavy industrial district, chapter thirteen point zero three, public safety, and chapter twenty-one point eighty, signs and outdoor advertising of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown, and this is just the first reading again, no action, but I'll ask, um, the Public Works Director Heath to tell us about this one.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, generally speaking, this is a series of amendments to the zoning ordinance that I'll probably have Brandy touch on a little more detail here, she's been working on this for quite some time, and she's got a lot of in-depth knowledge to the, the, all the intricacies behind this, in a nutshell, what it's accomplishing is allowing the use for warehousing, packaging, and sales of fireworks within certain zoning districts within our community, uh, Brandy, if you could maybe go a little bit more detail there, that'd be great.
Yep, thank you, Heath, so, and this actually goes back before I was even here, that we've been working on getting fireworks use in our ordinance, so what we're doing here is allowing it first by adding it to the ordinance and having certain standards, so there's different standards for the I1 light industrial and the I2 heavy industrial, and a lot of that goes, um, towards the type of fireworks that can be sold there, and if I go, so the different, the differential factor there is, um, that in the I1, they can warehouse and sell class one four G fireworks, and then in the I2, they can warehouse, sell, and package class one three G and class one four G, and so the difference there is just their classifications and their explosiveness, so the I2 obviously could have the, um, the more hazard, hazardous, uh, firework, so then also, there's these certain parameters for each, each district for the I1 and the I2, and, I'll find the map here, maybe, I'll go back to those ordinances, okay, so for the, for the I1 zone, it's showing where there are vacant properties that could be utilized for fireworks use, and so the different requirements that each of these, um, design standards will specify is the minimum lot acre has to be, or the minimum lot area has to be an acre, it has to be adjacent to commercial zoning, it has to be greater than a half a mile from residential zoning, and then for the I2, it's five acre minimum lot area, and then it has to be greater than a half mile from residential zoning, and that's just to protect neighborhoods and also so we're not getting a bunch of fireworks uses that could be dangerous, um, and then so also we added it to our safety ordinance to allow for the use, or for the, um, yeah, for a fireworks use in the city limits, so, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Brandy, I, I think, um, but we're calling this new chapter, which is the standards, firework activities, and I think it might be a good idea, since we're not dealing with setting off of fireworks or using fireworks, we're talking about warehousing, packaging, and selling fireworks that maybe we could be more explicit in the title.
Right.
And just write warehousing, packaging, and sales, so there's no confusion, Councilman Hoyer?
I was just curious, um, how did we determine the half mile, is there an equation that we use to like determine catastrophic event?
So actually, uh, First District looked into this, um, and like, when they were looking at this in twenty fourteen, that was just the distance that they thought was appropriate for protection, um, and I would imagine that the, uh, fire department was involved, well, and Chip Premus, the fire marshal, has been directly involved with this, and he felt that it was appropriate.
Okay, because I would just verify, I mean, keep it in mind how fireworks are manufactured, and, you know, it's, it's gunpowder, of course, and some other materials, but just remembering, you know, what's the setback for like, if you had a weapon munitions plant, like, how far that has to be away from certain areas and stuff too, just to be safe on it, because in the event that something did catastrophically go wrong at one of these locations, just want to make sure that structures and people are still kept safe, especially if there's manufacturing going on, so...
Right, right, well, and actually, if the, in the I2, there are some, uh, pretty invasive permitted uses already, so, and, you know, we want to minimize that, um, that we wouldn't have a catastrophic event for sure, so, yeah, we can look into that, and then if there is, if we find anything, then we can bring that back with the second reading.
All right, thank you, Councilman Vilhauer?
As I understand, this is very similar to what came before this body about five, six years ago, and it, it got rejected because there were some city, county, uh, jurisdictional issues, you want to touch on that, a little bit, Brandy?
Yep, yeah, so they were hoping to get a joint jurisdiction in place before we would take this on, and so that has been accomplished, and so then now, this falls in place with, with both regulations, city and the joint jurisdiction.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Item twelve is authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of understanding with First District Association of Local Governments to assist the city with work activities associated with application and administration of South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources State Revolving Loan Funds, SRF, for the wastewater treatment building, and look for a motion on that, have a motion by Lalum and a second by Holin, and Heath, could you tell us about this, please?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor, uh, members of council, this is a, a short form of an agreement with, uh, First District that pretty much summarizes their assistance they'll be providing to the city in relation to our wastewater treatment, uh, administrative building that'll be constructed here this year, as you're aware, we were recently awarded our SRF, uh, state revolving funds loan for this project, and with that comes certain stipulations that we need to follow and abide by, and First District is very well-versed with those regulations and, and what needs to be monitored and tracked and, uh, and memorialized throughout the process, so in a nutshell, they'll be helping by attending bid openings, uh, pre-construction meeting, uh, they'll be watching and, and monitoring the Davis Bacon Wage Payroll Review Process with us, they will assist in project drawdowns and act as a liaison between the city and the D E N R, and also help with project closeout.
All right, thank you, any questions or comments?
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this one as well.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item H is old business, is there any old business? Councilman Robie?
You're on.
Councilman Robie, I have some news to report, last week, we submitted an application to the Corps of Engineers, um, for regrading of the linear wetland that exists up off the Cherry Drive area, and we will, uh, wait and hear the response and, uh, proceed accordingly once we hear back from them. Welcome.
Any other old business? Any new business? Councilman Vilhauer?
Actually, I've got a, a couple, three things, Mayor, uh, first of all, with all the snowheads out there, again, I think it's time that we as, uh, around town, look at adopting a fire hydrant, I'm just to kind of... I'm just kind of observing, fire hydrants are getting, getting buried in snow, so it might not be a bad idea to take a shovel and go around the neighborhood and clear out a fire hydrant. Secondly, Mayor, do you want to, maybe you're going to plug the retreat coming up here in a couple of weeks? Were you planning on saying anything about that?
No, but...
Oh, well, would you?
Sure. The city council will be having a retreat. I believe the date is February 4, and we'll be just going over our vision and our mission, and looking at our transition to city manager form of government, and how to step that out properly, and anything else that the council wants to discuss, and that, that is an open public meeting. But it will be all day, so if you're interested, pack a lunch.
I would just encourage all of us here in the council to, if at all possible, attend as much of that, if not the whole day, as, as possible, because I think it'd be a, a day well, well-spent. And we do have a professional facilitator will be involved that day, too.
Please come the whole day, if, if at all possible. We, we have hired a facilitator, and we plan to use the map that we generate in this effort for the rest of the time left till we get to city manager, and probably well into the future.
And I had one other item. Councilman Hollein and I have been sitting on kind of an ad hoc, the development committee, if you want to call it that, that actually, I'm looking at Chris Shilkin out there, kind of put together here. It's kind of actually a follow-up to what you had put together after you were elected here a couple of years ago, and we've met a couple different times, and I know that a couple of people from that group have been in touch with you, Mayor, and you, Heath, as far as, you know, and, and the purpose of this group is, how can we better facilitate, you know, we keep hearing comments about it's so hard to get things done from a development perspective here in Watertown. This group is, is trying to work with, you know, amongst themselves, as well as reaching out to city staff as far as how to best get that done, and I, I think there's been some communications with you, Mayor, and with you, Heath. I guess I'd just encourage, if you've got any comments to say about that, because like I say, it has been a couple of good meetings that we have had up in Chris Shilkin's office, the development company.
Right, thank you.
And I think we're hoping to see some, you know, some report to this body from, you know, from City Hall before too terribly long, and I think was the, understand that we've got as far as some engineering design standards that, hopefully that we can take a look at. As a council, I think that was the plan that, as we understood it, so I guess any comments either one of you might have, I'd entertain at this point.
You want to make a comment, Heath?
Sure, Mayor, thank you, Councilman Vilhauer. No, I, I've been in tune to the, the fact that the meetings have progressed, and I think that's a great step forward in achieving what we need to here in Watertown, and trying to streamline our processes. My experience in past communities, getting buy-in from the developers, the contractors, their agents, their engineers, is a critical step in this process, and I commend Chris for his efforts as a Watertown Development Company, helping spearhead these meetings. And I look forward to being plugged in at whatever point is, is appropriate for me to plug in and, and be part of those conversations, but I think that they're making great progress and, and making things, taking a turn for the better in our processes here in Watertown. Of course, there's things I've been trying to implement since I've got here. I know Brandy's been on board with the vision I've laid out at the staff level, and some of the little things, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, that we could accomplish. I've been plugging those things in and working with staff diligently to try to expedite the review process and, and what it takes to obtain a permit to build in the community of Watertown. Still a lot of, lot of room to improve. I don't discredit that one bit at all, and I, I'm glad to be on board to help make those improvements and, and see them, see them through to the finish here, so. And that is, of course, an evolving process. I believe we'll make some changes and then realize we could do a little better yet, even, so I'm looking forward to being part of that.
Right, yes, I would like to add, too, I mean, our development standards, our development regulations, that's, that's our decision on what we do, and as a community, we can do whatever we want. And if our regulations, if we're hearing from a segment of our community that they're off-kilter, then we need to fix that. We need, these are our own regulations as a community, we need to address them and make sure they're appropriate, and I'm thrilled that we have community members that are willing to put in the time it takes to do this, because it's a tremendously big job, it's an arduous task, especially when our development standards have never been adopted by our community. They've been controversial, and so we've had them, they're, they're in a book on the shelf, and we, we kind of know what they say, but everything's up for debate because it's so controversial, and we need to just decide as a community what standards are appropriate for us and adopt them. And we can always, you know, fiddle with them if they don't work out, and tweak them to make them just right for us, and that way, we can all stand behind them and, and feel good about them, so I, I am really, really glad that the community is taking this task on. It's going to be very helpful for us. We want to serve, and I know the staff wants to say yes, 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 when people come in and, and want to develop, and, but they have to watch out for what the community wants, and if we have regulations in there that our community doesn't want, we need to get rid of them. So this is a good process, and thank you for serving on that. Is there anything else? We have any liaison member reports? No? We do have a reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, in order to discuss with our legal counsel on contractual and economic development matters, so we do not expect to take any ants, action when we come out. Look for a motion.
Motion.
A motion by Lalum and a second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.